So I think we're ready. Welcome, everybody, to the City of Daly City Recreation Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 25. Please visit Daly City's virtual meeting website to register to attend the virtual meeting via Zoom, watch the live stream of the meeting and view the agenda at bit.ly/DCMay25. COVID-19 announcement on public meetings. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order in 2920, members of the Daly City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream at bit.ly/DCMay25. For public participation, there are two ways to submit public comments. One, send written comments by 2:00 p.m. on meeting day, and two, register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email active@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by 4:00 p.m. will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members and included as an add to packet on the city website prior to the meeting. Comments received after 4:00 p.m. will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission for the public meeting. Comments are not read out loud into the record. To speak at the meeting, you must register to join via Zoom. The city requests that you complete your registration by 5:00 p.m. on the meeting date. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing instructions on how to join the meeting, including a unique link. Your address and email will not be disclosed to the public. Public comment is limited to two minutes max. To register to speak at the meeting via Zoom, visit bit.ly/reccommtg. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. When you'd like to speak on an item during the public comment portion of the meeting, you'll need to use the raise hand feature on Zoom. The city will not provide technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the livestream on the city's virtual meeting website. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Office of the City Clerk at 991-8078 as soon as possible. This meeting is now called to order. And first, we'd like to begin with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And next, on the agenda are a roll call.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Pastor.
Here.
Chair Luna.
Here.
And moving forward to our approval of the... Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'd like to enter the motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, moving on to the approval of March 23 minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
You do have a motion to approve.
And a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And moving on to the director's report.
Thank you very much. So tonight, we are going to be talking about the summer programming and updating information on what we'll be doing during the summer for the community. And I'm going to turn it over to the amazing staff that is here this evening to present. And we'll start off with Ray Reyes with Papa Rec.
Okay, well, good evening, commissioners. Here, we're going to talk about some of the things that we've got planned as a staffer this summer. Obviously, with things changing, you know, we're gonna be very flexible with what we have. But we'll give you a screenshot to kind of capture what we hope to do a little bit, and then hopefully more as, you know, guidelines and the state opens up. So let's flip it. Is Gardo doing this? There you go. Okay, so I'm starting off because we are going to try to implement what we've decided to call pop-up recreation. And so unlike what some traditional people might think that this is, rather than a programming, a program, it's going to be more of a marketing strategy. So what the plan is, is to pop up in parks, schools, and tot lots, like just to find where the people are. We've been, you know, out of mind, out of sight, you know, for so long that we want to make sure that there's a presence of actual people. So what we're hoping to do is, you know, on a semi-weekly basis, you know, just kind of pick a random park. Obviously, it won't be as that random to us. We'll do a little bit of scouting beforehand just to see like what the usage is and like kind of what like maybe the walking traffic is to promote. You know, not everybody's on social media, not everybody sees everything we post. So, you know, we want to kind of get that person-to-person, you know, interaction with these folks. So starting this weekend, actually, we're going to do somewhat of a longer event or a longer tabling type event at Geller Park. So we'll be on the park site from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And we'll be out there hopefully catching some folks that are playing on the playground, you know, the soccer people and whomever is using the park to kind of let them know what else is happening this summer. We're gonna, you know, as it goes on, you know, obviously it'll be smaller or bigger depending on where we are. So we may hit one or two in these semi-weekly stops. And so we'll probably give people a week's notice. So that's the pop-up part of it where it's not a fully planned event. Like if there's some instructors or some contracted, you know, classes that want to promote in a specific part of town and we happen to be there, we will give them that opportunity to give, you know, literature or, you know, maybe light demos. And then we also will always have some take-home projects and giveaways. So, you know, and then one of the things that we may do depending on the site is to add the library in this piece and they can do a mini story time. If we happen to be in a park where there are children, you know, present, then we can do that and kind of interact with them to also reintroduce libraries being open and all those things. So pop-up rec, again, we'll start this weekend. But then moving forward, it will be every other week, maybe once or twice a week at one to four parks during those weeks. So you definitely will get the heads up on it, but also look on our social media and on other avenues that we will let you know where we'll be. And next is David. Oh, Leslie. Oh, that's not the one, Gardo. I think it's Gardo opened the old... Right, but Leslie.
All right. Thanks, Ray. Good evening, commissioners. I am really excited to be on the commission meeting. It's been many years. I wanted to just update you a couple of things that are happening in the class development area. So we've been very fortunate. Like Ray said, these are really unprecedented times. And we have been, I would say, the contractors particularly have been, some of them, very creative and also resilient, you know. They just are really coming up with some good ideas and try to keep things moving and keep the presence of what they offer out there. Even though some of them didn't have any enrollments, we had a number of classes that were scheduled to run, but we did have some that did run in spring. And our karate dough, Hakook Kai, he's been with us many years, over 20 years, because he was before I got here. And he ran an outdoor class as a tester. And now for summer, he has 50 students signed up for outdoor, for his outdoor class. He started with just some people. He was working with it on Zoom, some of the present students that he had indoors. So a lot of creativity going on. We have also Make Me a Pro Sports. They've been with us for over 20 years as well. And they are running a soccer, magic, and fitness skills class. So they've been doing that as well as a camp. Their camps, now we've added a third week for summer. So this has been, this has been an amazing flip-flop from last year. Last summer, we totally hit our peak registration enrollments for the few virtual classes that we had. We just said, okay, let's just give it a try. But now our virtual classes for summer, obviously, are really low numbers because people want to get outside. So there's a little flip-flop going on. We're grateful that we have some new folks, new contractors that have come on board. One is 42nd Street Moon. They are out of San Francisco and they offer musical theater classes and camps. So this year's is called Triple Threat. So it's going to be a wonderful array all week long. They're doing three different weeks throughout the summer, starting June through August, singing, dancing, and acting. Because of the orders that are in place, they will not be doing a full or play. What they will be doing are the skills and like mini little skits. So it'll be a lot of fun. The age range is from six to 12. And we are really looking forward to working with them more. Had some good dialogue with them and we're ready to get going. Also, we have Young Rembrandts that is an indoor class, but it's going to be outdoors. So please, if you have any grandchildren or young children that are interested in drawing and creative art in that regard, there's still room. So that's in terms of for camps, that's what we have as well as the soccer. And we also have classes for adults. We haven't forgotten the adults. We do have Jeanette Feinberg coming back, outdoor class, country western line dance. Also, Novella Peterson, soul line dance. We have a zumba class that's going to be outside. And we also have the low interval intensity training class that's going to be outside. So that's just a taste of what we are going to be offering. We have something for everyone from five years old to 105. And we are hoping to have a continued good turnout. And we also are bringing in other new classes. Again, like Ray said, we're just trying to be creative and bring in new things as we hear of an interest. So that's where we are with classes. Thank you.
And the next, oh, sorry about that, Leslie. Next on the...
No, no.
You're good. Next on the list will be Jeanette talking about the summer sports camps.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to start off by saying I'm so excited about having in-person camps this summer. And luckily, here at Geller Park, we were able to provide camps outdoors because we have such a large space here. And we are going to have five camps this summer. We're having football and all sports camp, two basketball camps, and another football to end it all. And we have some great instructors coming back. We have Bud Resnahan, Michael Morela, and Imani Stewart, who are all very active in the community and they're excited as well. This year, we decided to do two separate sessions. An AM session for six to nine-year-olds and a PM session for 10 to 14-year-olds. We chose to split up the age groups because the numbers are going to be limited and we wanted to make sure that each age group was being catered to. So our AM camp will be more instructional and the afternoon camp will be more intermediate. Currently, we're taking up to 25 participants. And when I say they are filling up, they are filling up. Some of them maybe only have two spots left. So the community is really excited about this as well. And like everything else in life, we are taking the extra measures to make sure everybody's safe. And we're just super excited to get people back in the parks and with organized activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. And the next, we have David Setzer talking about summer special events.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm going to be talking about our drive-in movie that we have coming up. In this summer, well, not this summer, I'm sorry. This spring, we did our first drive-in movie at Geller Park. It was a pretty good time. We had 50 people signed up. And we watched The Karate Kid. And the event was very fun. It was cool. People showed up in their cars, they brought blankets, they brought lawn chairs, they sat outside. It was awesome. So we're going to come back and try it again this summer for two weeks. Sorry, two Friday nights during the summer, July 9th and July 23rd. We're going to move it, though, to Westlake Park with a larger parking lot. We'll have two movie screens. We will be holding it for 50 cars only. You'll have to pay in advance to get a spot, $20 for daily city resident, $30 for non-resident. But the cost, the $20 is going to cover the licensing for the movie as well as some snacks and treats for all the cars that show up. The movie will start as soon as it's dark enough. And on July 9th, I'm applying to get the Goonies. And on July 23rd onward, both of those movie themes or both of those movies will go along with our rec and reading online program, which have the pirate theme and the knights and knights and dragon theme. So it will theme out our summer week. And that's the drive-in movies. Any questions?
Have fun. And last, but definitely not least, we have Ed Gardner talking about the volunteer leadership program.
So the VLP is back in a new iteration. Last year, I presented last year, what we did last summer. So because we couldn't have the teens come in person, we did a virtual program. This year, we learned a lot from that, but this year, we are bringing them back. Unfortunately, because we're not having the summer youth recreation program where they would normally spend most of their time volunteering, helping our staff, you know, play, watch the kids, organize, help set up games, things like that. We're going to concentrate on giving them as many opportunities as possible, similar to what we did last year. We're going to be focusing on opportunities. So anything we put out there, it's up to the teen. Like in life, it's for adults, it's the opportunities out there. It's up to you to take advantage of them. So what we're going to be doing is giving weekly trainings. These will concentrate on development of leadership and other life skills. Well, daily activities, so every day there'll be at least one thing, maybe two or three, that they can participate. And those are going to include cooking classes, crafts, projects, workshops, discussions, different challenges that they can do and come in person. But there's always going to be this virtual component so that if you can't make it in person, you can still participate. Obviously, because of the restrictions we have and we don't know what the restrictions will be come the start of the program for the city, we'll be taking on registration for each of these individual events. We'll kind of see how many people want to participate in person, how many want to stay at home, and that'll help gauge like what we do. But our staff is working hard to figure out what all these activities are. We're going to have our special events, so our summer showcase is back. We have another DCTV coming out. Let's see, we're going to have game nights, watch-alongs. We're going to be able to provide community service opportunities. So whether it be on Thursdays and Fridays doing food distribution, beautification projects that the Daly City Youth Advisory Committee will be trying to put together or helping with. David briefly mentioned the summer reading program. We're going to find different ways for them to interact and help give back to the community. We're also going to bring back our reward prize system where the more you participate in more things, the more opportunities you take advantage, it brings even more rewards and more opportunities for you to win stuff. Probably bring back some field trips here and there. Obviously, everything with the scope of keeping these teens safe. And we are going to be working with our Daly City Youth Health Center to provide some of these workshops, the Summit Hill Credit Union, and again, like I said, the Daly City Youth Advisory Committee. So we have a lot going on, the things are still in the air. But to find out, so registration will start June 7th. We'll have more details out before then. But until then, you can follow the teen program at Daly City Teens on Facebook and DC Teens on Instagram. And if anyone ever asks questions about teen programming, teens@dailycity.org is the best place to send that questions. That is the end of our presentation. Any questions for anyone?
Actually, I have a question for Ray. It's about the pop-up recreation. I think it's an awesome idea, actually, because, you know, like even I forget that there's like tot lots scattered throughout, scattered throughout all of Daly City. But one thing I want to put on your radar is that, like, for example, the park that I live next to is Polaris Park. I think it's also a tot lot. There's like four or five surrounding daycares that utilize that park quite often. And I think it would be an awesome opportunity to, not necessarily, you know, collaborate or anything like that, but just kind of scheduling to have like those readings and activities when those groups plan on stopping by the park. But just want to throw that on your radar, man.
No, no, thank you, Nate. I mean, yeah, those are the kinds of things that we need to figure out, right? And like, obviously, like I said, with, with kind of like the mass thing lighting up and people going out more. Well, you know, before we get there, we're going to drive around and see kind of what the usage is. And yeah, like you said, if there are like home daycares or even official daycares close, you know, we're going to let them know that, you know, hey, next week we'll be here and this is what time and you know what I mean. But yeah, it's kind of one of those things where we want to just kind of pop up just so that's how we want people to use our parks, right? Like, you know, I remember growing up in Daly City and we were at, you know, every park within a, you know, three-mile radius. We, you know, one park was for basketball, one park was for this and whatever. So, you know, we just want to kind of get back to that and let the people know that we're still around and the parks are for them to use. And I think that, you know, the genesis of this was more like, you know, people complain about not being able to do things outside when they've got a park like four houses down. And you don't think about that because it's more of a parking lot than it is a park to play, right? Like, oh, I'm just going to park in front of it. So I think that's what we're, we kind of wanted to do and just to let people know that we're here. But yeah, no, that is a great suggestion and I'll, I'll be contacting you probably to kind of get more of a information about who those could be.
Yeah, no, for sure. I'm tapped in with two of them. They're like my direct neighbor. So yeah, we could, yeah, tap in.
Not for sure.
And just a mention here that, you know, with, with all the environment that we're going into is, it's just great that we're being all proactive to get the message about recreation, what the services are and the new opportunities for the growing youth that's out there. That's, that's developing out in our community. So thank you all for creating this wealth of opportunity for the kids and parents and adults to get out there to participate in. So thank you.
Yeah, and just to add to Jack, I think it's such a great balance of activities that are emerging, even though, you know, the virtual, you know, the numbers on the virtual side are getting less. It's just nice that, you know, both offerings are still there, it's available. And I think it's a great transition right now, but it's also exciting.
And I'm going to add a little piece and then transition into the next item. All of the staff that spoke, Leslie alluded to it especially. It's been a long time coming for us to be able to get out there to the community. We've done little spotty things here and there, but, you know, classes and programs and camps, it's, it's breathing fresh air back into us. And I commend all of them for reaching out of the box again as usual and just turning on a dime and making it happen. So we're very excited about this summer.
Thank you all.
Especially when our, our services aren't there to receive them, to come down to the recreation department, we're going out to the community to kind of like put a face to the program, so to speak.
Real quick, just want to ask, is this our first batch of sports camps that we've had since everything closed down?
We've had a soccer one, I think, and yeah, that's it.
Okay, yeah, that's awesome. It's exciting because I saw the lineup of coaches or when you list, when you named them out, I think you got, you got an awesome lineup of coaches as well. So I'm excited for those 25 kids.
They have to get you out there too.
Oh, we'll see. Hope, you know, I've coached with Coach Imani before and I think he can handle it on his own. And just to give him a shout out, his organization, DC Stars, that's a team he coaches. I'm not sure if this was highlighted ever in one of the meetings, but DC Stars was in a Netflix movie. They were on the losing end of it, however, but it's still awesome that DC is represented one way or the other on a Netflix special. And I think it's the Snoop Dogg youth football one.
Yeah, that's what it is. And I'm going to be honest with you, they rent out the fields here at Geller and he has large groups out here. And it's so nice to see all the youth come together and people doing it just for the kids. I mean, you know, throughout the whole lockdown, I mean, just being there for the kids to help them mentally and physically is amazing. So hopefully, the kids get that experience in the camp as well.
And for all the staff too, because this is, this is exciting times. Like this is what recreation folks are, right? Where it's the communities we building slowly but surely, right? Slowly but surely.
Absolutely.
So the next topic of conversation is, you are aware that we do food distribution and we work, partner with Second Harvest of Silicon Valley. And they support us not just in food distribution, but through their, through our senior lunch program, providing us with different foods to make the meals happen. They have been chomping at the bit to try and get a food pantry down here at the Dolger Senior Center. And I'm happy to say that we received an infrastructure grant from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley in the amount of $87,303. And that will, Room 7, which I'm pointing in that direction because that's where it is at the Dolger Senior Center, is going to transition into a food pantry. And we, that $87,000, we're going to get two refrigerators, two freezers, two sub-freezers. We're going to, we have received a delivery vehicle that will be able to use on a daily basis for deliveries from the Dolger Senior Center to Lincoln when we start back up and doing the lunch program. And then we will also receive Cambros, which holds the food either hot or cold, depending on what is, that will fit into the vehicle. And then because Room 7 was a classroom, we received part of that funding that we got from Second Harvest. We'll transition the doors to widen up so that we can slide pallets through them to create the food pantry atmosphere in Room 7. And then when we realized we were going to do a food pantry, of course, we did not realize that the electrical in Room 7 was not going to be up to date for a food pantry. So Second Harvest is giving us an extra $8,000 to upgrade the Room 7 into the food pantry, making all the electrical updated. So in fact, they're working on that this week. And the doors will be worked on. Probably by the end of July, we will have a up-and-running food pantry. We will be partnering with the Daly City Partnership in providing us referrals. We will be working with the senior population here at Lincoln to make sure that anybody that is in need, as the food distribution kind of slows down potentially, we will have a place for those that are in need to go to get bags of groceries for a weekly basis kind of deal. So we're super excited about that. And we're obviously ebbing and flowing as we go, as we normally do. But we're really excited to be able to transition this location into a space that provides food to the community in a meaningful way. And as we've all talked about this before, we're trying to build that foundation and continue to build on that foundation to make it a strong foundation. So as we go and do our summer things and then we go and do food pantry and then we go and open up even more, we're just continuing to build on our foundation. So I'm super excited to share that news with you guys. And we're more than welcome to come down once it's all set up and ready to go. and ready to go and come in and check it out. Or volunteer your time to package. So that's kind of it in a nutshell for us, and um, that ends our director's report.
Well, congratulations on that. That's, that's just so great to hear. And I, I'll definitely come by and volunteer uh, when that, when you're all ready, but that's so exciting and so great for our community.
Thank you, definitely.
That's exciting news, Denise. You know, thank you to the, the group at Silicon Valley Harvest and Second Harvest now for, for their donation and, and including us in their, in their projects. So thank you to them.
Ditto, ditto, all of that.
And a big thank you to Ann Cooney for putting the grant report together to get it submitted to Second Harvest. So.
It's great. Great. So moving on to the commissioner's report. Does anyone have a report?
Not at this time.
Nothing either.
Okay.
I think this was a pretty informative meeting nonetheless, though, cuz it's, it's exciting to hear all the transition uh, from twenty-twenty. So, yeah, two thumbs up for me on this side.
Yeah.
Great. So moving on then to uh, announcements and communications, are there any other announcements at this time? Okay. And how about uh, public comments? Oh, um,
Hello.
Mark Wilson.
Hi there, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Hi. Hello.
Hello, Mark.
Hey, everyone.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Mark. I just wanted to ask or speak for just a second. And ask uh, about if uh, anyone has ever come to the Recreation Commission inquiring about uh, disc golf in the city? Um, I'm an avid player of the sport. If anyone isn't familiar with it, we have a course up in San Francisco that we play at. Um, and I was just interested in coming and talking to you uh, about uh, the game and potentially maybe um, getting some assistance from someone here about uh, looking at scoping out uh, spaces in the city and seeing if it is a possible avenue we could explore. Um, I really don't know what is available. I'm, I've lived here for about two years, and I've seen like some of the parks, but I, I don't uh, I'm not familiar with all the spaces around Daly City. I don't know if this has ever been proposed to you that we install a course in the city or not, but um, I guess I would like to try and explore the option with you guys and see if we can figure something out. Um, so if anybody is at all interested in helping me with that, I would certainly love to, you know, talk to you more and uh, if you have any questions for me right now, I'm, I'm here to answer them about, about the game and whatever you might wanna know about why I want this or whatever, you know. Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm Leslie, I'm, I'm the uh, class administrator, and I'm just curious, did you say the name of the organization is First Tee?
Uh, no, 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 no. Uh, First Tee is, First Tee is a, is a golf, like a ball golf uh, organization that teaches kids. I'm, I'm specifically, I'm, I'm a player of disc golf. It's like frisbee golf.
Oh, God.
Yeah. Uh-huh.
Yeah.
We have a club, there's a, yes, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's all right. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I was just saying, we have a club in San Francisco. There's a San Francisco Disc Golf Club that I participate in some of their events, but um, I would like to start like a Daly City organization if possible. Um, a group to possibly install a course, maintain a club and such, you know.
Uh, question for you, man. Um, I'm sure you know how uh, um, how or at least you've seen the process of a disc golf course come to life. Uh, usually, it comes paired with a, either like a large park. Um, or they kinda do their best to, to kinda do an outline around existing parks. And all it would really take, right, is to just put the baskets up, right? So um, I think, I think if, were you planning on like trying to start an organization? And then es- essentially, uh, like what would blossom is the course itself?
Um, yeah, kind of. I think so. I think what I wanted to do first was um, pos- just, I wanted to get in touch with you guys to look at potential locations in the city if, and, and, and to try to make an assessment of whether a course is possible, just because I don't really know the lay of the land. I don't wanna go through doing all that organizational work only to find out that we can't install anything anywhere, you know? And so that's kinda, that's kind of the main thrust of this, I think, first and foremost for me. Um, and I figured you guys just might know more about the various spaces that exist in the city than I would.
No, for sure. I think at this point, uh, I don't know if we're prepared to give you an answer in terms of uh, spaces, cuz I know we we're still trying to figure that out for a skate park as well at the moment. But I, but I do, what, what I would suggest is that, cuz I know disc golf is, is definitely a growing sport. Um, you know, I know a little bit, m- one of my buddies play, taught me how, what an Heizer and a Heizer is. But it's definitely a, a, a growing sport and uh, it, thank you for coming along uh, and introducing yourself because it's, is definitely gonna be on our radar. Uh, cuz I know uh, as we look for a space for a skate park, I don't see why we could also uh, throw that in as well.
For sure. That's cool to hear that you're doing a skate park too. I was wondering what happened to that little park that you had near City Hall there.
Oh, yeah, it got, is not in good shape.
Yeah, yeah, that's cool. I'm glad the, the effort's still alive. Um, but uh, yeah, no, I um, I, I just wanted to sort of put my name out here and, and, and see if anyone wanted to talk to me individually and possibly um, help me locate potential spaces, I guess. Um, just help me get a sense of what's out there, what's being used for things currently, and what, what is usable space? And what isn't, you know, things like that, uh, cuz I, I just have no idea.
Mark, I'd be happy to, if you can send in your information to um, our email at active@dailycity.org.
Okay.
And let us know, you know, put the subject matter as disc golf, and then we'll go from there and we can have a chat.
Okay. Active@dailycity.org. Okay. Thank you. That'll work for me.
Right. Thank you, Mark, for bringing that uh, awareness to us about disco. And um, um, well, you know, it's, it's at its early stages in terms of our awareness of disco interest in Daly City. So um, that's a start. Get, send your information to Recreation at that address, and um, we'll start developing some dialogue and researching it as well, along with you.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate it very much. Yeah.
Mark, I just have a quick question. Um, so just were you, and I know you're gonna email Denise your information, but uh, were you looking at this as a sort of a home base um, that would be ongoing? Were you looking to offer this as a contracted class or to rent space?
Um, yeah, kind of an ongoing home base for a, I assume a potential club that would form. You know, I know of at least a few players that do live here that, like myself, also go up to San Francisco to play. But, you know, if we had a course here, we would certainly be interested in maintaining it and taking care and doing things with the community for it, you know?
Yeah, it would be very much like a tennis court that's like open to the public, and it would be like a, a local club perhaps would take responsibility to maintain the course since they're the experts at it.
Uh, yeah, pretty much. Mm-hmm. Just, um, the, the S, the SF Disc Golf Club has a, has a deal with the SF Parks Department there to hold the course there, and they kind of have a mutual agreement. We could probably emulate that, you know, something like that. So that we could have a free course. I'm not a fan of like approaching golf courses. Some people put these uh, disc golf courses alongside of uh, regular ball golf courses, is what we call it, ball golf. Um, but I'm not really a fan of that, just because it limits accessibility to the game. Uh, and I think it should be a community park kind of thing.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Uh, are there any other um, public comments? Okay.
None here.
There are no other comments or uh, announcements. This meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-two at seven PM.
Come on.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
I would beautifully
Thank you all. Stay safe.
Hi, everybody.